Good evening.
Hi, how are you?
I'm okay, how are you?
Okay.
Show yourself down the south.
No, um, no, I didn't.
Lower your cellphone volume a little bit.
Nope, I recognize her.
I said, lower your cellphone volume a little bit, so you don't hear your phone.
It's sweet.
What, you don't?
Nope.
Okay. Pull up.
Alex, are you on?
I think you are there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Hey, Dave. Dave. How are you?
Yes.
Did Andrew, did Terry tell you? Did Terry tell you he saw Andrew at the golf course?
Something about Terry and the golf course.
There you go.
Well, they were there very long. We could go fight him, I think.
Yeah, yeah. He hadn't seen him in so long, he was surprised. He didn't know who he was at first.
Hey, Brian.
There we go. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, it is 6:30, according to the computer. I will go ahead and call the April 14th meeting of the Westport Town Council to order. We will start with a pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. My fellow board members had a chance to read the minutes from the previous meeting.
Yes.
Any corrections or changes? Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I will make the motion.
Okay, got Glenn, Jenny, you want a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, she led us.
Yeah, this is hostile. This is the agenda of this town.
Okay, next is the approval of the adjustments, payroll vouchers, and monthly bills. Have my board members had a chance to take a look at things?
Yep.
And I will entertain a motion to approve the adjustments, payroll vouchers, and monthly bills, please. Russell, can I get a second?
Yep.
Dolores?
Yep.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And it looks like there is one, two, three, four, five to sign here. Nope, more than that. They're hiding. There's six total. We've got a system.
Going over men, under men.
Okay. Rachel, you want to come up and get ready? You're next. I don't know if anybody's been down to the dump recently, or down on Washington Street, but the sewer project, I would say, is in full swing.
Yeah?
Lots of activity.
You guys ready for me? Yeah, so the contractor has started working on the fourth main, they're focusing from the treatment plant to the lift station, I think they've made it all the way down the treatment plant drive. They have a subconsultant on site doing the directional drilling under the creek, and a couple of other places. So they're going to keep focusing on that. They'll probably be out on Washington Street for quite a while. Through, they'll be working on the fourth main pretty much through May, through early May, and then sometime in May they'll switch gears, they'll finish up the fourth main, and start working on the lift station and the treatment plant. So, that's kind of the progress. With the rain, it's kind of a muddy mess, but they're doing their best. Sure, the treatment plant guys are not happy about it, but I think they've been trying to direct traffic, and if there's any issues, just let me know, and I'll, I'll work with them. I do have a pay application, number two, from them, for your review and approval. I believe you have the numbers, I know Gloria's got the total amounts. Other than that, we'll have a construction meeting this Thursday at 1:00 PM, if that date and time still works. We'll have it here, in the room up front here. Then, I did put a couple of pictures, in case you guys hadn't had a chance to get out there to see the pipe. So at the end of the memo, there's a couple of pictures, just of some of the equipment, and then, that's the pipe that they're boring, so the directional drill pipe. Yeah, the only other update I wanted to just say, we've submitted the quarterly updates to IDAM for the two open cases with IDAM, down to two now, so that's good. And those quarterly updates have been submitted, there's a bunch of emails back and forth, but I, I think those got taken care of, so, yeah, that's kind of it.
Looks like pay up two is 194,750, and that's, that's right here.
Yep.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion that we approve this, and I sign this pay up.
I second it.
Dolores made motion.
Oh, I thought you made the motion.
Okay, I will make a motion.
Sorry, I thought that's what you said.
I was asking for a motion, but I'll make it. You second it?
Yes.
Okay. Any, any discussion or questions? This came in the, in the packet that Rachel sent out, and I forwarded it to everybody. We're up to, what's this, 11% done, is that?
Yeah, that's, and this pay up goes through sometime March. So they've done a lot of work here, end of March, even into April so far, so I...
I'm guessing we're going to be seeing some pay ups to come through, pretty quick, much bigger.
Yeah, I expect the next one will be pretty big.
Okay.
Yep, and once they get lift station pieces and components onsite, they can bill for those too, so.
Okay. I've got a motion, I have a second. All those in favor of approving this pay up for 194,750, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just give this to you now?
Yes.
Do you, do you want to?
I'll need it for tomorrow, unless you scan it to me.
You can just take it.
Okay.
Okay, Kiwanis Fishing Rodeo, May 10th, Richard Young. Barb, and you, are you going to be helping out with that? This is an annual event put on by the Kiwanis, they like to use the town lakes, and this is just asking for permission to do that. I'll make the motion that we go ahead and approve the fishing rodeo at May 10th, out at the water plant.
Okay.
Okay, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
Thank you.
Westport Christian Church, George.
Thank you guys very much. It's that time of year for us to come forward and do our annual ask for permission. We would like to know if we could get your permission to close the road in front of the church from range till just west of our property line. This would be June 22nd through June 25th, from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM, while we're hosting our Vacation Bible School.
June 22nd to June 25th?
Yes.
Times again?
5:00 PM to 8:00 PM.
And this is for VBS?
Yes. And, but this year I would like to add, if we could also get permission, the alleyway that is going along our new building, could we do that right to the end of our property line to, to where the other cross alley goes? Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. Because we'll be using all of that property to do different things.
Okay.
Okay, and I'm going to add a couple more requests, just keep writing.
Okay.
We also have a, our annual family reunion slash block party that we do on August 2nd. We would like to make the same request on that date, from 3:00 PM till 7:00 PM.
August 2nd is a Friday?
It is a Saturday.
Saturday.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And if you would approve that, could we possibly get a, a letter from the board saying we have permission? I would like to be a little bit more proactive this year, talk to our neighbors, let them know what's going on, and make plans, we want to make sure that they know how to get back and forth. We're not going to shut off access to anyone's property, we just, that section, so we can keep kids and families safe.
Okay.
And one last thing, this is a lot. Years and years ago, the town allowed us to use some of the barricades that they have, didn't know if that was a possibility, we, all we have is a couple of barrels and some cones, and in the past, people have kind of gone through that, and created a little bit of a hazard. So if, if y'all wouldn't mind if we could do that, that would be great.
Damon, you have any problem with that?
No.
I don't think anything has been overlapped with these. Unless we have a... What?
Need a motion?
Sure.
Okay.
So...
Need a second?
Yes. Okay, so we got a motion and a second. This will be closing Mulberry Street on June 22nd to 25th, 5P to 8P, for VBS. The alley closure is concurrent with that, at least half of the alley. Then there's a family reunion on a Saturday, August 2nd, 3P to 7P, closing Mulberry again, and then a request to possibly use the town barricades. So we got a motion, got a second, anybody having questions for George? All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you guys very much.
Got it, thank you. Okay, zoning. Corner of Mulberry and North Poplar, Jeff, you want to come up?
Good evening.
Hello.
How y'all doing?
Good evening.
Wonderful zoning for two lots I'm asking for, that I currently own at Mulberry and 109 North Poplar. We're putting up, planning to put two duplexes on there, and so I need to go from business to R2.
Find you here, I'm zooming in. I think I got you. So, I believe you were able to speak at some point with all of the board members. This is the L-shaped property right here, directly across from the water tower. You were originally requesting to purchase this from the town, your plans have changed. It's my understanding now, you're where the old tax office was, where the old gas company, that building is going to come down, and you're going to put one unit right there, facing Poplar Street.
Correct.
Using the driveway to Poplar. And then on this guy right here, you'll be putting one unit facing Mulberry.
Correct.
With a driveway, and these are duplex units. There'll be two, two, two buildings with two units each per, that's four apartments or whatever. So, does anybody have any additional questions for Jeff? The latest request, I thought was very reasonable, it was a nice compromise. Does anybody else have any questions before we put this to a vote? He's asking to get duplexes there, it has to be at R4?
It has to be at R2.
R2? And still hold duplexes?
Yeah, so R4 is more apartment building, that's larger than that. So R2, which is residential?
Right now, this is...
It's business, I believe.
Yeah, here's zoning. Yeah, that orange color is, is business there. Well, that will turn green or two, like the rest of it there, is what he's asking for. Now, our decision is not binding, but it is the first step to go to the area plan.
Correct.
And he needs our recommendation to at least get that far.
Also need, in, in their letter for approval, there would be two lots mentioned, because they're parcels separately. And also that you guys can supply utility, city utility, to those two lots.
Correct. Standard operating procedure.
Yep.
Okay, does anybody have any questions? We ready for a vote, or to make a motion? Go ahead.
I will make the motion.
That we rezone?
That we rezone the...
Rezone R2?
Mm-hmm.
Those two pieces of property? I will second. Okay? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? All right. Thank you much. Thank you. How soon do you want the letter? Think we can do that? Thank you. Okay. Is Chris Tebby here? So, we tabled this last month, so Russell could be here. So the only update that I have was the two documents that I sent to all the board members, from the area plan. For the crowd, what Roy is wanting to do... John, I gave you permission to correct me if I say anything wrong, okay? Okay. So, back in August, we rezoned, or approved the rezoning of these seven acres on Kentucky Avenue, for the first six lots of a subdivision, right here along Kentucky. The drainage study said that he needed some kind of small retention ditches, or whatever, behind there. Now, it looks like he is purchasing the rest of this, the southern 12 acres, almost 13, from Todd, and there is a pond there, right now. And he's been working and cleaning it out, and he's wanting to use that as a retention pond for the entire 19 acres for development there. Is that right? Use that as, as the solution to, to the drainage, for, for the entire 19 acres. The, and he wants to merge, I think, all this into one petition to the area plan. So, we, we've already approved the, the top seven acres. Since...
Well, it's called six house plots, right?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
But we've approved rezoning for the entire seven acres, and the first six houses. I lost my train of thought.
Sorry.
No, that's okay.
The issue with it not being his property yet?
Thank you, that's where I was going. Since he doesn't own it, the area plan and the technical review committee, that consists of the area plan director, highway department, I think it's one of the commissioners, or the councilperson, and then the lawyer, they want Roy to get an easement from Mr. Hampton, granting him permission to drain, in case the, the contract falls through. Since there's nobody here to formally request a rezone, I, I don't feel real strongly either way about doing it now. One of the reasons we tabled it, Russell, is so you could come back and get more information.
My, my concern is that the retention, or using the pond as retention will be sufficient. I'd like to make sure that the engineering tells us that it will do it.
Yep, you get into it...
It's something I don't think it's going to bother this board, it might, it might be 10 or 20 years, but I do not want the town to get stuck with a water problem years from now.
I'd like to get engineering input.
I don't even want to approve it until a drainage engineer does their review, tells any homeowner, landowner, this is what you need to do.
You get into a chicken and an egg situation, too. Do we approve before we have the, the drainage study, or does he expend all the money to get the drainage study before we even approve or rezoning? And we already have approved the rezoning of the north seven acres, so...
I'm 100% for the addition. I'm just a little bit worried, that's my, my personal worry.
Since he hasn't... Sandy, do you want to speak for him?
I can, if you have any questions.
Something I want to ask. Okay. That's, that's... Does anybody have any questions for Sandy?
Well, my other theory on it is, too, is it going to put more flooding, or backup in, on Wiley Street? Or is that not going to be considered until he does?
Before you, I mean, I've been in construction for like 40 years, so before you can build a facility, and Jeff Moore is going to get into this when he wants to build his church, so it's just not specific to Roy, you have to get a drainage design study done by a licensed drainage person, and they will tell you, this is what you need. If you need a, a retention or detention pond, or swales, or culverts, or, they tell you what you need, and you cannot, you have to take that drainage study to area plan, or, you know, to get your permits. And if you don't do what the engineer says, they don't give permits. So, my understanding, and I didn't talk to Brad Schutte, or anybody on area plan, is Roy was trying to get the drainage approved and run through, and they suggested that before they look at accepting his drainage design for that south parcel, that it gets rezoned to R2. So, since they asked for it, and that was the issue at the last meeting, there was a area plan meeting like on a Wednesday, and there wasn't enough time to get information. So, at this point, I, I believe, I'm not 100%, because I haven't talked to Roy for a while, he's just wanting to see if you object to rezoning that south parcel to residential. And if you don't object, then he'll go back before area plan and say, Westport doesn't object, what do I need to do now? If you guys vote yes or no, obviously if you vote no, then definitely there's no houses going on it. But if you vote, we don't have an issue with it, that doesn't say Roy can go build 10 houses on that lot. When he wants to split it up into houses in five, 10, 15 years, he's still going to have to come back to you guys and say, we put our six houses in, now we want to expand the subdivision. Do you have an objection to me putting six more lots in the north section? You know, it'll have to go through this, so if you, today, you're not telling him, or anybody, that they can build houses on it, you're just saying you don't object to the rezoning of the south lot.
Yeah, and by the time we get to more than six houses, I assume the drainage study for the, the south acreage would be completed by that time.
From my understanding, he's not going to be able to build any houses, even in those six lots, until he gets this drainage study. They'll figure out how much water that pond can hold, the creeks, all that drainage, and the drainage designer will say, based on all this, you can build six houses, you can build 10 houses, you can build 20 houses. But that doesn't mean he can, that's just, they have enough drainage under control. So we don't have to worry about flooding Westport, or Wiley Street, all that will be taken care of in the drainage design by the licensed drainage engineer.
Now, are there any issues on that side, with it not being his property? Does Steve, or the Hamptons need to come and ask for the zoning?
I'm not familiar with real estate, but he has a, I, I don't know what it's called, when you're buying a property, maybe Jeff Moore knows more what that is?
On contract?
It's not on contract, it's something, it was called something else. And I'm, I'm not familiar with real estate terms, but it's more, I think, than just like if you were buying a house on contract.
Well, and, and the other, the two documents that I sent to my board members, that wants him to get the easement, so at least for the north seven acres, he's, he's got rights to drain down there. That, that's the reason they want that now. I don't want anyone to...
I agree.
Again, engineering input.
How many won't approve it until a drainage engineer does their review, tells any homeowner, landowner, this is what you need to do?
You get into a chicken and an egg situation, too. Do we approve before we have the drainage study, or does he expend all the money to get the drainage study before we even approve or rezoning? And we already have approved the rezoning of the north seven acres, so.
I'm 100% for the addition. I'm just a little bit worried. That's my personal worry.
Since he hasn't, Sandy, do you want to speak for him?
If he has any questions.
Okay. That's, that's, does anybody have any questions for Sandy?
Well, my other theory on it is, too, is it going to put more flooding or backup in on Wiley Street, or is that not going to be considered until he does?
Before you, I mean, I've been in construction for like 40 years. So, before you can build a facility, and Jeff Moore is going to get into this when he wants to build his church, so it's just not specific to Roy, you have to get a drainage design study done by a licensed drainage person, and they will tell you, this is what you need. If you need a retention or detention pond, or swales, or culverts, or they tell you what you need, and you cannot, you have to take that drainage study to area plan or, you know, to get your permits. And if you don't do what the engineer says, they don't give permits. So, my understanding, and I didn't talk to Brad Schutte or anybody on area plan, is Roy was trying to get the drainage approved and run through, and they suggested that before they look at accepting his drainage design for that south parcel, that it gets rezoned to R2. So, since they asked for it, and that was the issue at the last meeting, there was a area plan meeting like on a Wednesday, and there wasn't enough time to get information. So, at this point, I believe, I'm not 100%, because I haven't talked to Roy for a while, he's just wanting to see if you object to rezoning that south parcel to residential. And if you don't object, then he'll go back before area plan and say, Westport doesn't object, what do I need to do now? If you guys vote yes or no, obviously if you vote no, then definitely there's no houses going on it. But if you vote, we don't have an issue with it, that doesn't say Roy can go build 10 houses on that lot. When he wants to split it up into houses in five, 10, 15 years, he's still going to have to come back to you guys and say, we put our six houses in, now we want to expand the subdivision. Do you have an objection to me putting six more lots in the north section? You know, it'll have to go through this. So, if you, today, you're not telling him or anybody that they can build houses on it, you're just saying you don't object to the rezoning of the south lot.
Yeah. And by the time we get to more than six houses, I assume the drainage study for the south acreage would be completed by that time.
From my understanding, he's not going to be able to build any houses, even in those six lots, until he gets this drainage study. They'll figure out how much water that pond can hold, the creeks, all that drainage, and the drainage designer will say, based on all this, you can build six houses, you can build 10 houses, you can build 20 houses. But that doesn't mean he can, that's just, they have enough drainage under control. So, we don't have to worry about flooding Westport or Wiley Street. All that will be taken care of in the drainage design by the licensed drainage engineer.
Now, are there any issues on that side with it not being his property? Does Steve, or the Hamptons need to come and ask for the zoning?
I'm not familiar with real estate, but he has a, I don't know what it's called when you're buying a property, maybe Jeff Moore knows more what that is.
On contract?
It's not on contract, it's something, it was called something else. And I'm not familiar with real estate terms, but it's more, I think, than just like if you were buying a house on contract.
Well, and the other, the two documents that I sent to my board members that wants him to get the easement, so at least for the north seven acres, he's got rights to drain down there. That's the reason they want that now. In general, I don't think I have any problem with rezoning that, or R2, just like we did the north piece.
Sandy, I had to leave my.
Yeah. Like I said, if they tell him.
Are we losing a battery? Can you tell who that might be?
You know, if the drainage people tell him you need to build a 10-acre pond, he has to build a 10-acre pond. They tell him you need to build a two-acre pond, you build a two-acre pond, or whatever, I don't know what the terminology is for ponds, so.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay, somebody, thank you, Sandy.
Just a point of word, Mr. President. I think we may be struggling a little bit about where this is procedurally, and whether not having the property owner here providing the request for rezoning, or at least requesting approval from this body for eventual rezoning on their property, may be problematic, and likely where we could have benefited from Mr. Tebby kind of providing us with the background as to where it could stand. I think having a general discussion about whether the board would support an eventual rezoning, I think, is appropriate, but voting.
I think might be a little premature.
To rezone, or formally support rezoning of a property without the applicant present and voicing their support for that, unless, you know, we have Mr. Tebby indicating that there is a purchase agreement that's, you know, contingent upon some of these other things occurring for that property, and then can then be sold, I think, may be premature.
I've got no problem with waiting another month either, on the recommendation of the attorney. So, I fully thought that Chris would be here.
Yeah.
So, I think, Sandy, we're going to go ahead and table it for another month. Chris needs to be here to speak officially. And it sounds like we'd like to see a copy of the, either the easement that he's got with the way of the property owner, or a copy of the contract.
Well, I think that's the issue. I mean, right now, this body has approved the rezoning of the north parcel.
Yes.
And so, if it's a matter of an easement to access that drainage, that could be done just between the property owners executing that documentation.
That is correct. That does not need us.
But if the idea is that the southern property needs to be rezoned as part of this for some reason, again, that I think that we probably need some, for them to tell us exactly why that is, then, you know, something showing that there is support from that property owner would, I think, be helpful.
You're talking about Mr. Hampton?
And more progress. For Mr. Hampton to either have Mr. Tebby represent that they have reached a purchase agreement to that effect, or have that property owner here, but have more information showing that that is, in fact, the desire of that property owner.
So, we need something from area plan stating their reason why they would want rezon, or just the Hampton?
We need Chris Tebby and/or Todd Hampton, and a copy of the purchase agreement, a copy of the easement that area plan has asked for, something like that. You know, right now, we have no, and I appreciate the details you provided, but you're not in real estate, you said that.
Right, yeah.
It's not binding. So, I'm okay with waiting another month, too. Okay?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I still have a question.
Thank you.
A lot of this, I don't profess to understand, all the legalese and all that stuff.
Okay, thank you.
It's on. I, I speak against delaying this vote. I have passed many a motion with the key word contingent. I want to encourage our investors, and this constant delay, I think, is discouraging to someone that's ready to invest money in this community. Is there any possibility, if you can, fine with me, I'm not going to get uptight about it, but is there any way that we could do something to convey to people like this in this situation that we all said we're intending to vote for, but there's something blocking it? I'm having trouble hearing, and I hope to correct that in a few days, but is there any way of passing something that would indicate our support for, or even rezone, contingent upon? Do you do that kind of thing in law?
I think, you know, I think if you wanted.
I've done that many a time in church work.
Yeah, I think if you wanted to, you know, make a motion and pass a motion to the effect that this, the town and town council is in support of this development, and, but, you know, just wants to make sure that the property owner is on board with this proposal as well, I think that that's, that's fine. You know, I think that sends the signal to investors and to anybody involved that's watching this and following it, that, you know, the town is interested in this, and Gloria will certainly make it known in the minutes that the reason that any delay wasn't due to the town not wanting to support the development, rather, it's, at this point, we have a request to rezone a property without an applicant being here for property that's owned by someone else, and.
Sounds a little sketchy.
And so, I think that the town just, you know, just wants to make sure that they're doing their due diligence, but otherwise, it sounds to me as though there's, there is support for the project.
Well, I'm just looking at it from a practical standpoint, not a legal standpoint. I want to encourage people to invest in this town, and I've sat here for seven months waiting on some things to happen regarding a piece of property that's not for sale anymore, and we just keep pushing it down the road, when I think at some point, we need to make some quicker decisions legally, according to law. But it, that's all I'll say.
Would you like to make a motion of some kind?
Well, I don't have all the wording. I usually like to have the wording in front of me, but if the secretary knows how to interpret my brain, I would like to make a motion that we approve, and if this goes down to defeat, I won't hold it against you, I just won't speak to you no more. No, seriously, I would like to make a motion that we approve. Is it the rezoning? Is that what we're talking about?
Yes, but that is exactly what Alex suggested that we not do for right now, but maybe we modify it and make a motion that we are in favor of the subdivision in general.
John? He's going to have to have that information before he gets his engineering drawing on the pond. Have the potential water to come down there at some point in time, potential. He's not going to dig that pond up for three houses and dig it again for four houses and do it again for six or 26.
Yeah, he's got to have the whole layout to know how.
He has the total potential.
Yeah.
Not how he's saying there, but the total potential. He'll have to have to get an accurate engineering drawing of the water flow coming down there. There are houses you had in, there's more water flow. If it's going to be, if his idea in that building is 27 or 127, that'll impact what he's got to do to get the water.
Yeah.
He already got an engineering drawing for those six.
Right.
He elected not to do that because he loses too much ground for more property.
Correct.
So, what he needs to know, I think, for the engineers to finish their work, is what is the potential at the end of this period, how many houses could be there? He'll have to build that facility to carry and cover that, I think, what I don't have.
Yeah.
And I don't feel that as a board, we keep pushing it out. It's not our fault that we're pushing it out, it is the lack of information that we are getting. And I, you know, and I'm looking as forward to getting some stuff back there as anybody else, but, you know, you need to see, you need to see it. And he, we need, it's not our fault that the information's not coming in, is what, is the way I want to put it. That's my feelings, I just don't think it's, you know.
Well, I, I don't disagree with her, basically, but I saw this under the wording zoning permission, and I was thinking that we were going to consider the rezoning of something.
We were.
We were.
And we fully expected Chris Tebby to be here to represent it.
Right. He was here last month, and we know what he's after, Roy. We know what he's asking for. We delayed it because one member was not here.
And we've got two letters now from the area plan, that he's, they're wanting Roy to enter into an easement with Todd Hampton, since Todd does still own that southern, those southern 12, 13 acres.
So, does that negate the, the need for rezoning? At the end of the day, it needs to be rezoned.
No, no, it doesn't.
It doesn't?
No.
Then why are we rezoning it?
Because eventually, he's wanting to merge both of those pieces of property into one petition for area plan.
So, is this request premature?
I don't know about that.
Okay. Well, I'm not here to debate it all technically, but I, I just want to give these, these who are ready to, and I know they've got responsibility, and they have to come before, I understand all that, but is there any, I mean, is there anything that we can do as a board to encourage this person that we are working to satisfy his request, whether he's here or not?
Yes, I think we can make a motion that we are in favor of the development of all 19 acres.
Is that what you're saying, Mr. Alex?
You can certainly make whatever motion you'd like to make. What I, what I was suggesting is you could make a motion indicating that the town is in support of this development, and reset the hearing for next month with the expectation that the applicant be here and provide answers to some of the questions that you've spoken on. But with that said, you can make whatever motion you'd like to make.
I'm aware of that. And I don't profess to understand all the, all the technicalities, but I just like to encourage our investors that while they need to go by the law and the rules, but I've been sitting here listening to this month after month, and I know the investor has a responsibility to show up, as far as I'm concerned, but he failed to do so. And other things has happened in between, it's muddied the water, to speak plainly, and I just want to see something happen and make a headline in the local newspaper, that something's happening in Westport. And I think there are some things happening, but oh well. I just wanted to get that off my mind, so I've succeeded.
Okay, do you want to make a motion?
No, I don't.
Okay. I don't mind making a motion.
I want us to, I want us to be in unison, and I have opposition down the road there.
No, you do not.
Do you want to vote yes?
Yeah.
I don't think we have the information for the rezone.
I just want the things to be done the way they need to be done.
I want to, I want to make a motion that we are in favor in general of the housing addition of the 19 acres, and.
Okay.
I think we're moving towards.
Thank you, Chairman, for helping me with my wording.
Okay.
And, but I will make the motion, and that will.
Okay.
To do what you just said.
Okay. Would anybody like to second?
I will.
Okay.
I used to do that for others when I chaired meetings, I'd come up with the wording, and then they would make the motion. It wasn't according to parliamentary law, but I told them Robert died a long time ago.
Okay. So, we have a motion in favor of the development in general of the 19 acres. The zoning specifically is being tabled for now, but we are, we are in favor of the, of the development. Glenn made the motion, Dolores seconded. All those in favor, say if I was saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So, we're moving in that direction. And Glenn, I appreciate the frustration, but we do not live in the same world that we lived even four years ago, as far as regulations go.
Yeah.
And how things have to be done. So.
I understand.
Okay. Ordinance 2025-1, purchasing procedures, the second reading? I thought we'd already been second reading on this last month.
Well, because you didn't vote for it the first time, it didn't count.
Ah.
So, this technically is the third.
Okay. So, this is a table that Alex, I think you gave her, as far as our purchasing policy. This is just a formality, we've had three months to look at this now. I'll make the motion that we approve ordinance 2025-1, purchasing procedures, on second reading here.
I will second.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passed on this 14th day of April. You want check marks here in the ayes column, or you want signatures?
Signatures, please.
Okay, we have first reading of an updated traffic ordinance. Is there, are there any change markers in here that shows me where the changes are?
It's a total new ordinance, amending the old one, correct?
It is, yes.
Okay. So, we got an ordinance 2022-10 that amended previous ordinance. This is about Range Street coming off of State Road 3, basically making it saying no to truck traffic because of the turn at the four-way. For purposes of this ordinance, trucks shall mean any motor vehicle, including trailers or semi-trailers, that has three or more axles, or that is designed to be used primarily for transporting goods, cargo, or materials, and has gross vehicle weight of GBWR of 10,000 pounds or more. Local delivery shall mean a delivery pickup of goods, materials, or equipment to or from a destination located directly on Range Street between State Road 3 and Main Street. Section 0.2, traffic, truck, traffic prohibited. No person shall operate or cause to be operated on any, be operated any truck on Range Street between State Road 3 and Main within the corporate limits of the town of Westport. Section 0.3, exceptions. The prohibition under section 0.2 shall not apply to trucks making local deliveries to or from properties located on Range Street between State Road 3 and Main, emergency vehicles, public utility or municipal service vehicles engaged in authorized work, school buses, or agricultural vehicles operating seasonally for low. or agricultural vehicles operating seasonally for local farm access. Section 0.4, posting of signs. The town of Westport Department of Public Works shall erect and maintain signage at all necessary locations to notify drivers of this restriction. Signs shall comply with the Indiana Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices. Section 0.5, enforcement and penalties. A violation of section 0.2 of this ordinance constitutes a Class C infraction under Indiana Code 34-28-5-4, and is subject to a fine of up to $500 per occurrence. Each trip or occurrence shall constitute a separate violation. I always get confused about, we're not passing it, but approve the first reading of it.
First reading.
Oh, any discussion about this? Okay, can I get a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance 2025-2? Or come back?
Approve.
Okay, motion, can I get a second?
A second.
Dolores, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
First reading is approved. It will come back next month. Come back to life. Resolution 2025-2, this is new. Gloria, can you give a little background on this?
After talking with other clerk treasurers who recited for not having ordinance that clearly gave them permission to make electronic payments, I felt the need to check ours, and it didn't say anything in it. So, I asked Alex to amend it and add that we have permission. We have already been paying some payments by electronic, like the USDA loans come out electronically. So, I just want to make sure that our ayes are dotted and our t's are crossed.
Okay. Any questions for Gloria? Authorization to make electronic payments. Clerk Treasurer, the town of Westport is hereby authorized to make payments for lawful claims and obligations of the town by electronic means, including but not limited to electronic funds transfer, EFT, automated clearinghouse, ACH transactions, online banking transactions, credit or debit card payments, other secure methods approved by the State Board of Accounts. Conditions and limitations, all electronic payments shall be made only for claims that have been properly authorized and approved in accordance with Indiana law and applicable town policies. Two, be documented with sufficient supporting information to satisfy auditing and record keeping requirements of the Indiana State Board of Accounts. Three, be reported to the town council in the same manner as other dispersments, the reports that we get, right? It's visible. Four, be subject to internal controls established by the treasurer to ensure the integrity, accuracy, and legality of the transactions. Okay. I'll make the motion that we approve resolution 2025-2. Can I get a second?
Second.
Get a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please indicate, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? There's only three lines as we get down, just sign below it. Damon, Superintendent of Public Works, report.
Good evening. Unfortunately, it is mowing season for those of us who get tired of it by the end of the year. But, so I just want to remind everybody the cemetery rules, we have to start cleaning it up. So, if you have anything out there that's in the grass area that you want, I would suggest very quickly to get it, because it will be removed. We've got, I think we're only down to, two, maybe three sections left to get the shepherd hooks out. So, if you have family members, or friends, or whatever, that you've got shepherd hooks or stuff that's not supposed to be there, I would get it out real quick, because they do get pulled and thrown away. So, other than that, I think we got to bid openings on the stuff we were, we were selling.
Looks like we got two here for the Simplicity mower. Did we not get any on the tiller?
That's all I have.
Okay, can we open them?
Yeah, you can open them, that's fine.
Hey, this is Double Deal Lawn Service. Double Deal Lawn Service would like to bid $402 on the Simplicity mower. Simplicity Sunstar Mower, $600, Jeff Greby. Think that's Jeff Greby, isn't it?
Uh huh, yes.
Okay. We had two bids, $600 is the highest bid. I'll entertain a motion that we accept that for the Simplicity mower.
Motion.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the Jeff Greby bid of $600 on the Simplicity mower. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I believe I've got a contact for Mr. Greby. I'll contact him tomorrow, let him know.
He's got his phone number on here.
Okay.
Okay.
Does anybody have anything for me?
I don't think so.
Anybody else have anything?
Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to the end of the agenda. There's a couple things that I wanted to talk about real quick. I don't know how many of you know, we've got a new siren down at the, used to be the old fire department, where the police department is now. And we've had some complaints that it's not quite as loud as the old one. The answer that we're getting from emergency management is the new siren is not designed to be heard inside. And I'm just the messenger. If you need notifications, it's recommended that we, you sign up for some kind of an emergency alert on your cell phone, and you can do that through the county, or you can do, purchase a weather alert radio. I, I have both. I got Code Red on my phone, and I've got a weather alert radio in my house that's so loud, I swear it could wake the dead at night. But those, those are the two options. Glenn and I were out and about the day that the siren was tested, and I believe we heard it all the way down to the, to the dump. But inside, people's houses are pretty tight nowadays. The windows are getting better. And if anybody would like any kind of instructions on how to sign up for Code Red, this is the county website, DecaturCounty.in.gov. And right down here, there's a big icon that says Emergency Alerts. I think you can sign up right here. You see that says Code Red? You create a username, a password, you can, there's a certain amount of programmability. If you're not comfortable doing this, we can help with it at the town hall. We're still keeping office hours on Tuesday mornings from 8:00 to noon. You're welcome to stop by. We could, we could walk you through this. I might even get a wild hair and give away a weather alert radio at the next board meeting. Just raffle it off for anybody. Everybody put their name in the hat, and whoever shows up will pull the name out, and they get a new weather radio. So.
So, that's from the EMA?
Yes.
That's, and that's standard for all of their tornado sirens that they do nowadays?
Yes.
Oh.
All, all the new ones that they put up, New Point, St. Paul, the one at Letts is new, like ours. So, the other thing I wanted to point out, Thursday, the 17th, hang on, come on up, Walter, to the microphone. Thursday, the 17th, from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. is the big trash day, spring cleaning. We will man the dumpsters from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. I'm going to be there 7:30 till probably 12:30. Dolores is going to take over 1:00 to 5:00. Jenny is going to be there 6:00 to 8:00. And if you guys could pick up some hours, either in the morning or the afternoon.
I'll try to be there when the girls are there, in case we've got some heavy lifting.
Okay. So, that, that will be with Dolores. You want to join me on, can you join me on Thursday morning?
For what purpose?
Monitoring the trash dumpsters, like we did last year.
Okay.
I think you're the only man certified for it.
Yeah.
The reason, the reason I ask that is, I was told last week that I have moderate severe hearing loss, and it verified what my wife's been telling me, and so, and my kids. So, I honestly did not hear what you said.
Okay.
I really, I know it sounded funny, but I honestly didn't hear it.
Okay.
I heard you, but I didn't hear you clearly. But that was my fault, not yours.
Can you hang on just a second? Can you give us a quick update on what electronics recycling did on Saturday?
Yes.
And the paper shredding?
So, it went really well, much better than last year. We had 70 cars come through for the electronic and paper recycling. So, it was really good turnout and went smoothly, no issues.
Lots of stuff.
Yes, lots.
Lots of stuff. Okay, Walter, what you got?
Well, I just want to say something about the siren. I used to be in my basement, I could hear the old one go off. I was standing on my front porch and barely could hear it the last time when we had the bad weather. So, what makes sense here?
Do you have a cell phone?
Huh?
You have a cell phone?
No, 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 that, that has nothing to do with it. Why have the sirens if you can't hear it? That's my point. The old one, you heard it. When, when it made that loop, you heard it. The new ones, like I said, I barely could hear them on my front porch, and you know where I live at.
Well, I, the next EMA meeting is the 1st of May, and I'll see if I can get some more information. It's about the best I can do right now.
I, I just think, I cornered, shooting, I can't think of her name, about the siren, because it was bad, it was bad. Because I had to stand on my front porch just to hear it.
Okay.
I, I do have some other stuff, but I'll go ahead and sit back down.
Well, since you're up here, the, the floor is, so this is the open part of the meeting now, and the chair recognizes Walter Hunter for three minutes.
Okay. Go back to the apartments again. What's being done?
The Business Association.
I know, it says Westport on it now. There's a Westport Business Association on it now, but nothing's being done.
We've got a meeting Wednesday this week, so I will get an update, and I can give you some.
Now, they got boarded up doors on it, trying to keep them out. But they still got the same trash in the front of it and everything.
Oh, and I did say, if that stove was still on the porch come Thursday, I would go get it. So.
If what?
There's a stove that was on a porch there, is it still there?
They got stuff piled out there in front, just, they always working on something, and which, I do that too in my driveway, but I pick it up after I get done.
Well, on Thursday, we, we can probably make a dent in that.
I, I just want something done about it, you know? I worked my butt off trying to keep my property looking good, and then when I drive too much property, I got to look at this. I wish you guys had a look at it, or you almost do.
Is there still somebody living there?
Yeah.
I think they've still got one tenant.
But, it's the same, it's the same people who lived there before.
Well, when, when did I go to the Association meeting?
Two months ago.
Two months ago. And the day after the meeting, they were going to call the courthouse and start the eviction process on the one that was left in there.
Well, they're awful slow, then.
Well, the evictions are. We, we can get an update on the eviction process as well.
I just want things cleaned up. If I didn't know that it was going up for, I might even bid it on, just so I could bulldoze it down, but.
Okay, anything else? Got a minute? All right. Anybody else from the floor? Brian? I'll get to you next, Dave.
Just like to, I had an incident down at my house last Monday, 911 call to the Sheriff's Department. I want to commend our local police department, because without Luke, nothing would ever been done.
Okay.
I made a call at like 6:15 in the morning with a disturbance down there. County was supposed to send somebody down, 3:30 in the afternoon, still no, no officer. I called Luke on his personal cell phone, not realizing that he was off duty that day. Of course, I apologized, and I just want to say, he went out of his way. After I got off the phone with Luke, 15 minutes later, I had a county sheriff at my door, and I'm trying to apologize. And I said, well, a little too late, you know? And, you know, these guys don't get enough credit for what they do for this town. You know, a lot of people want to say, oh, they don't do nothing, you know, they just ride around in the car. But I'm telling you, these guys go above and beyond. In the same way with Damon, all that construction going on on my street down there, I call him, they're always down there to, if there's a problem or something, and they always keep us in the loop, what's going on. These people need to take notice of what, what these town workers do for us. I see it all the time, but, you know, I stay on good terms with them, and I talk to them daily. And I think that's what we need in this town, is people need to be transparent with the town employees to understand what they're doing. And it's like coming to this meeting to keep in touch of what's going on around town. But the police department, like I say, I, on behalf of my wife and myself, because it could have been a pretty ugly situation, and Luke solved it, you know, within 15 minutes.
Cool.
So, I just wanted to say thanks.
Thank you, appreciate it.
I'm Dave Heilman. I am here representing the Westport Methodist Church, and I want to thank the town of Westport. I want to thank the town council, and I want to thank Damon Land and Colton Davis and Andy Allen for what you did for us when you started the demolition of the old Westport Church. Damon called my wife on, I believe it was a Monday night, and said, we're going to start. She says, is there anything you want out of there? And she said, yes, there are two things, and they're actually cornerstones. And we met him the next morning and showed him what we had, and he said, we'll be here tomorrow morning when Andy gets ready to start, so you can tell him what you want. Well, on Tuesday, we got there, and Andy was there, and my wife and I were there, and Brian Jones showed up, and Jake Snowden showed up, and we started looking at things, and we found a pla, I, I knew it was there, but I didn't realize how important it was. There was a limestone plaque on the building that said ME Church, Westport, which goes way back to the Methodist Episcopal Church, which was created when the Northern Methodist Church and Southern Methodist Church joined. We got that. We also found some nice pieces of limestone that came from the building, and if you've been past our sign out on the highway, you can see them there. There are going to be capstones on the bricks, around the flower bed, and on top of the two pillars that are there. Andy also, with Andy Allen, was able to get us some bricks. We have the bell out of the building when we, we moved out of there, and we're going to make, I'm going to say a bell tower, and don't get excited, it's not going to be a bell.[1800.63] tower, don't get excited, it's not gonna be a bell tower, but we're gonna use those bricks to make something to house that bell in, and put that in front of the church. But without your thinking of us, we would've never gotten that stuff. We are so thankful. Thank you.
You're very welcome, glad we could do it. All right. Anybody else? Katrina?
I was told to come to this meeting, so. Yes, I am the librarian at the Westport branch, and I would, we would like to, we have started new programs, and they went very well, well attended, and we'd like to start Storytime, which is like a half hour every week, 10 to 10:30. And we would like to request that we would use the front room for that on every Wednesday morning from 10 to 10:30. This is for early literacy development for children, and this is what we do as the library for the public, and so we would like to ask permission to use the light of the front room. Yes.
Connie, where you at? Or Sheila? I, I don't think there was.
'Cause I was told, maybe by you, that I was supposed to come and ask permission, yes.
Yeah. The, you, make sure you coordinate with Connie and get that on the books. In general, I think, anything that we can do to help the library expand, at some point, the scheduling is going to get really tricky, but I don't think we're there yet.
The only thing I've seen during the week is sometimes NIPRO had trainings here, they usually, once or twice a year, they have like a whole week of training, so as long as you coordinate with Connie, there may just be a week or two a year, you can't use it, I don't know.
But in general, I don't know if it rises to level of a motion, but I'll, I'll go and make the motion that we support Storytime Wednesdays, 10 to 10:30.
I just wanted to, one of the main things I wanted to say was, isn't that, I think that nature day is gonna happen once a month again?
That's totally outside, that would not even. That would not be a part of the, that would not be a part of inside. That was just, that's just a pavilion. Okay. Right now, the plans. Okay. Well, we do have the library on the third, we already, the library already reserves something on the third from 11 to 12, the third Wednesday.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we support the Storytime Wednesdays, 10 to 10:30. Second? Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I don't think we have to do this every time, Katrina, honestly.
Okay, thank you.
I thank you for coming and asking, keeping everybody up to date
Okay.
on, on what's going on in the library. Just this evening, I gave a key to the lock in the hall, so you can open that and close it when the library's open and closed at your leisure. And we've also allowed access to the bathrooms while the library is open as well.
Thank you for that, that's, that's very good for the library.
Okay. Thank you. Sandy, did I see your hand?
Yes.
Come on up.
This isn't a complaint or anything, but, so in 2023, the town voted to increase the town council to five, I think everybody agreed for that. And I thought the main reason was people wanted to have the town council members staggered, so we'd have three, would be elected, then we'd go two years, and we'd elect two, then we'd go three, then two, then, you know, like that, so we'd never have all five council members and the clerk up for election at the same time. When that happened, I thought the previous council said in a meeting that there should've been a solution to how those council members would've been elected, but it had to be 12 months prior. And since we didn't have that done, they appointed the two, and they had to appoint them for four years because we didn't have anything. Well, you're already in your second year, and I would just like for the council, instead of waiting till the last minute, to maybe think about what is the town going to do in 2027, when all five of the council positions are up for reelection? Whether it be, we're gonna vote for, we're gonna take a vote, and the top three highest vote-getters are four-year terms, the next two are two-year terms, just whatever that is that you guys think is a good idea, that we just don't wait, and then all of a sudden we've passed that deadline, and we don't, we end up where we are now, with having to elect four for four years.
And I, I share your confusion. I, I think I know how it's gonna work, but I'm not 100% certain. I think, so we're in our second year, this is 2025, 2026, the election will be in 27. Five new members will take, could possibly take office in 2028. But of those five, I think, Alex, the way the ordinance reads, or the way you explained it to me, is three of those members are a four-year term, and two of them are a three-year term. Is that accurate?
My recollection, I would need to pull that ordinance back out and take a look at it, but I.
I, I think it's worth a second look.
It sounds like we need, I need to take a look at it, and then, a point well taken, we need to talk, make sure we're talking through the process for that.
Yeah, I, I just didn't want us to forget about it, and kinda slide through the cracks, and then all of a sudden, we're like, "Oh geez, we needed to do something six months ago, now we're kinda forced to do something one way," so.
I'm with you, absolutely.
Okay. And then the other thing I wanted to bring up, is there a way that Westport can have a primary election for its council members and officers? Just like everybody else does, and then you know you can go vote in May all day?
That is contingent, and I'm gonna get out of my lane real quick, that is contingent upon how many candidates file for the number of seats available? And it is, it's the clerk's office and the party chair.
They have to file by February, and if, if you have three seats open for Republican or Democrat, and three or four people, all of the same party, sign up, then you have to weed it down to however many seats are open in the primary. That's the only reason you have a primary, is to simplify the ballot for the fall. So if there's three seats available, four Republicans sign up in February, then you will have a primary, but that's the only reason you would. Otherwise, it goes on, so like in the last election that we had, we had several Republicans sign up for council, but I think that they signed up after the February cutoff, there was some timing there, so that's why they ended up just having a, what do they call that?
Is it a caucus?
The, the local.
Convention or caucus?
Yeah, town convention, yeah, instead.
Okay. It's just, my personal opinion is, I think a caucus is exclusive, and I think the town needs to be more inclusive, you know, when you don't know about the caucus or convention until.
It really has no, we have no control over, it's state law that sets up that protocol, so as far as the town, though, other than, if only Republicans sign up, then the Republican Party has a say, but other than that, we really, as council members and, and just local members, we don't have a say in it, it's your election board that determines that.
So that would be something to bring up with the Republican Party of Decatur County?
That, or.
Or the, the county election board.
A good 30-minute discussion with Mike Gasper, a firm of the Republican side, might be in order.
'Cause I know that, you know, it's just, it's a certain day, if people are on vacation, if they have plans, and it's only for an hour, you know, like I couldn't, couldn't come to that the last time we had it. And I think, Dolores, you, you weren't able to vote for council, were you?
And was I informed of that?
Yeah, so I mean.
And was I watched like a hawk, literally, two people behind me watching me to make sure that I made no move to do anything.
Right, and, I don't know, just me as a citizen, I just.
I would definitely look up your, if you're Republican, then look up your local committee and see who's, who's the council, who's the president, who's the chairman, and call them up, because if you Google that, it says right on there who's the president and who you would call. So I would, if you have any frustrations about it, and if it's Republican.
I mean, it's not really a frustration, it's just a suggestion that I think it would be, in my mind, it seems to be more fair to include more people than to, like, exclude Dolores, I mean, why did she, it didn't make sense to me that she didn't get to vote.
I was not that party.
We don't have any control over that. Literally, we were told, "Oh, by the way, next Thursday is when they're gonna do it." We, it's not up to any of us.
And primaries have always been partisan, you always have to declare a party in a primary, that's the way it's always been. And if you're, if you come in and try to vote, and you want, and you, you give them your party, and you get the wrong, but we had that happen one time in the primary, just this past May. They declared what party they were, and they didn't see the name on there that they expected, but they had, they had already signed in and was registered as the other party, and I don't know, I don't remember if they voted or not, I mean, I don't know if they walked out, but we couldn't change it at that point.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
But.
That's a valid question, as far as wanting to know about that, 'cause, I mean, I showed up for that caucus, not knowing that I really wasn't supposed to be there.
For the room, Dolores is a Democrat.
Should I be laughing at that?
She, she is one of the few Democrats that I do like.
I am, very few.
The other ones are my family.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sandy.
And while I'm interrupting, I, or whatever, I'm gonna thank Damon and Colton too. They saved our life this past week, and then Luke, what was that, two weeks ago? We had our little yippee ki-yay on the, on the street. Yep. He did a great job diffusing it. And then Damon brought help. So, no, I wasn't going to kill Andrew, so don't, don't, don't put that in there.
You got something else, Walter?
Yeah. I've been hearing some rumors about different people getting fines for mulch, rocks in your yard. So how come we still got one house standing that, that nothing's ever been done, and you've tore down a bunch of other ones?
Well, this board has not torn down anything
Huh?
other than the church, but that just happened to be during our tenure, all of that process was started under the previous board. But we've had properties that we have fined because of trash, the mulch pile was, was trash, we've got some properties we've got our eyes on, about abandoned cars. I thought we had an agreement on the house that you're talking about.
That was a year ago.
I know, and the way he interpreted the agreement and the way I interpreted it were two different things, so we're gonna have to have a, have a little meeting of the minds, and something is gonna have to be done.
I mean, he's no different than George Cannon, all the rest of them you guys tried to tear down, he's no different, I'm sorry, I mean.
Other than it wasn't us that was doing it.
Huh? Well, the only thing is, he works for the town. That's a lot of it, sorry, I mean, I'm sorry, I mean.
You can think that, that's fine.
I think real highly of it.
All right, anything else?
That's it.
Going once, going twice. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Russell, and I got a second from Glenn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.